One of you.
One of you.
Please proceed. So, all we commence today's meeting, the usual. Can I ask you to have the switch off on the side of your mobile phones? So as sure that you're right at your music. Thank you for that. Colleagues, it is with great sadness that I have to formally report the death of our colleague Leo Taylor. Leo had also served on Eddington District Council from 2002 to 2009, and was the final chairman of the Eddington District Council prior to LGR. Leo had also been councillor on Wingate Parish Council. He had been heavily involved with Wingate Community Centre, Wingate Juniors and Wingate Infrance. Leo had a deep affiliation with the cricket club, which he had been involved with since 1965. On Leo's passing, the cricket club described him as the backbone of the club. Ladies and gentlemen, Leo devoted the vast majority of his life to his community. This was recognised in 2013, when he received the British Empire Medal. He simply wanted the best for his community. He gave the best to them, and we will miss him dearly as a friend and colleague. Secondly, it is also with great sadness that I have to report the death of former Durham City councillor and alderman Jeff Young, and former Eddington District councillor Stan Bishop. Jeff and Stan have served their respective district councils for 22 years. Can I ask the council to join with me in standing for another silence? Thank you. Please proceed. Did you enjoy it? One minutes. Can I move up to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 1st December 2018? Thank you. Can I have a second there?
The forward thirty minutes, Chair.
Thank you. Does the council agree on the minutes as if the right protocol?
Agree.
I'm generating two declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any items of business on the agenda? I'm generating three, chairman's announcements. Firstly, I'd like to place on record my personal congratulations to everyone throughout the county who were recognised in the Queen's New Year's Honours. Secondly, colleagues, we'll recall back it out, December meeting, the Salvation Army toy appeal that just got on the way. I am delighted to inform you that last week we received a letter from the Salvation Army thanking staff and councillors for their donations. Our contributions helped over 50 people, 60 children, have a happy Christmas, and to wake up to find presents under their tree that morning. The Salvation Army were also able to provide 18 families with Christmas lunches. Thank you all for your kindness and generosity. Can I say too that I was handed this in my office, invited to speak on it briefly. Holocaust Memorial Day is on the 27th of January. Holocaust Memorial Day takes place on the 27th each year, the day for the largest Nazi death camp Auschwitz-Purgenau was liberated. To the best of my knowledge, the DLI were also involved in liberating the Purgenau camp. This year's theme is 'Torn From Home', and asks us to reflect on what happens when individual families and communities are driven out of, or wrenched from their homes because of persecution and all the threat of genocide. Ladies and gentlemen, I was actually invited to to wear the badge, the Holocaust badge, for those of you taking the manual Kelby badge. I will take this out and put the badge on now, and I hope you, my colleagues, will do the same this week. Thank you. I'm generating four, the leaders' reports. Can I ask the leader of the council to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm sure all members also, yourself, also wish to join with me in paying tribute to Lord Costa, who also sadly passed away over the last few weeks. As people will know, Derek Costa was a long-serving representative of Bishop Auckland, a very well-regarded asset across the spectrum. Obviously, he was a very experienced politician as the shadow chief worked for many years through. She thought she was superior in political politics. I know Derek has always had a kind word for everyone, including himself, and I know that he would be very much missed. So certainly want to start my voice this morning by paying tribute to Derek Costa. Can I thank all council staff who provided vital services over the past little periods, including social care staff, bit crews and road maintenance teams. Luckily, the weather was calm. I'm not sure what's going to happen in the next few weeks, but it was certainly calm over the Christmas and New Year period, so there were not too many issues. On a long notice video of one about being accused of giving a local boy a Christmas present went viral and has been watched nearly 250,000 times on social media. Regardless, Panto Snow White also is no success or ever, but all 90% are available to its souls. We're now almost a month into 2019, and it is planned to be an exciting year. #Durham19, the county's Year of Culture, includes openings, activities, festivals, events and anniversaries. It kicks off with a performance of Handel's Messiah this Saturday in the part of the third annual Durham Book Festival, featuring the world-famous orchestra of the Age of Life and it's performing in the cathedral. The festival runs until 19th of February. Planning is already underway for the ever-popular Bishop Auckland Food Festival in April, and will now be joined by a new food festival in Sia in June. Later in the year, highlights will include the 10th anniversary of Lumiere in November, which will bring back a number of old favourites as well as new reservations. By then, we will have seen the completion of the Auckland projects, cultural regeneration projects, the opening of Auckland Cathedral in the spring, and the opening of new Spanish art gallery, as well as the normal Portish centenary celebrations. In June, July, welcome International Cricket World Cup, with England, New Zealand, South Africa, Sri Lanka and the West Indies all on their way to Chester Street. And of course, we have our popular growing annual events such as Brass, London's Gold, that Durham Book Festival, Durham Big London Cyclones Tour Series to look forward to as well. Durham 19 is for everyone, not just for track visitors. I hope that all AAPs will be involved in the programme, and that by the end of 2019, every county resident has had a chance to take part in this ceremony. Chairman, turning to inward investments and raising the profile of the county, the work of the council, Business Durham and Partners has already attracted 40 multinational investors into the county over the past three years. The focus on inward investment activity continues with our new Durham Powered by People initiative that was launched in December. The new initiative supports the county's drive for inward investment, jobs and growth, and uses one of our great strengths, our people, at the heart of the campaign. To support the initiative, we've helped the business to develop a brochure of success stories and a series of short films, including our manifesto read out by people of Durham, a promotional film, a series of 10 case study films of different businesses from across the county. Powered by People will feature as well as the regional business leaders summits to take place at the end of January. The summits will cover the role of the North East in the UK economy, partnership working, and a panel discussion on the future of Durham in the context of the local industrial strategy. The theme of people also featured has passed a special time supplement at the end of December. The supplements included the mission business, technology, education, culture stories, all showcasing the county as a place to live, work, visit and do business. We are sponsoring a new quarterly business magazine for Durham produced by the Journal, the first issue of the magazine, co-entitled the Regional Business Summit, and pulling through business news and features for all about Durham. There is also an article in this week featuring the Journal about the council's continued focus on regeneration and the impact it has had, including a case study. Two specific stories that members may have seen this month having been going ahead to build a new 10 million railway station at Orton, with initial work due to start during the next few weeks. We expect the station to open to passengers in 2020. The new station will significantly improve transport links in the east of the county, providing a boost to the economy and widening employment opportunities for local residents. Meanwhile, work on the 6 million pound flood prevention team for Chester Street will start before the end of the month, following approval from government of 2.79 million PRT act funding, which adds to the already emitted funds from the county council and the Environment Agency. As well as reducing the flood risk, this scheme will help reinvigorate the central marketplace area. Members may be aware that we are currently consulting our new vision for the Durham Borough Partnership. The vision builds upon the success of the altogether better themes and sets out key ambitions for the future. Members of the public, businesses, partner organisations have been commenting on the proposed ambitions for the county up to 2030, and there's already also been a screw-up need session. The consultation closed on Monday, and finally, there now have been written up a new draft vision for the county that will form later to have a final stage of consultation later in February. The latest public consultation on the county Durham plan will also start shortly and last for six weeks. The draft plan will then go to Cabinet ahead of being submitted to the government for independent examination. Everyone is being encouraged to have their say on the plan as well as on our housing and homeless strategies, which we will also be consulting on in the coming weeks. Chairman, next month we'll see the council take decisions on the 2019-20 budget at our next meeting, and in the meantime, we continue to lobby for fair funding for County Durham and the North East. Members will be aware of huge pressure, particularly on children's services at the moment, and whilst some more funding has been announced by the government, this will be nowhere near enough to meet the demands probably being faced. The councils and schools need to stay on funding immediately demands in the long term. The council also continues to lobby the government regarding potential changes to the public health funding, which could see Durham County's 19th leader in funding for 2020. The BBC Sunday Politics Show on the 13th of January ran a public health feature about these proposed changes in funding, with help visitors, service units and AHP partners, as well as myself interviewing as part of the piece. We will also continue to campaign for a back end for all local authorities in the region with the association of all these councils, and particularly in advance of the crucial government funding review, which is expected to raise up this year. Chairman, one or two upcoming cases, known beforeity, mentioned Holocaust Memorial Day, which takes place on 20th of January. Organised events during this few days in County Durham includes an exhibition at Bishop Auckland Town Hall, a service at Durham Cathedral, and the St Anne's Church Bishop Auckland's, including, I think I mentioned, a speech of historical survivor Eva Clark. It is also Chinese New Year on the Tuesday, 6th of February. A variety of activities and live-out performances are planned in Durham City on the 1st of September. In other news, our Operation Screw Stop programme celebrated its 80th birthday. In that time, we visited 24 towns and villages to make them cleaner and greener, and they also won a prestigious Keen Britain Tiny Award earlier this year. Daniel Big Springley launched on Tuesday, 19th of February, and runs for several weeks. Last year, there were no fewer than 272 residents and more than 4,000 local people. This month, our fostering campaign focuses on fostering teenagers struggling groups, teams of the biggest age group in need of a foster carer. The campaign also focuses on potential foster carers who are prepared to offer a permanent home to look after a child until the age where they can become independent. At December's Cabinet, it was agreed that Durham would be the host council for the new regional adoption agency that covers the whole area of Durham and the Sunderland local authority area. Since then, following consultation, the name for the new agency has been agreed, the DOTS foster house. The group has seen indications offered to support the new agency's causes last week. The joining the DOTS cancer support service launches tomorrow, with the service in partnership with Macmillan Partners arranging support services for cancer sufferers and their families. Lastly, it is Time to Talk Day on 2nd of February, which encourages everyone to talk about mental health. As a time to change employer, we will be supporting this awareness day with reminders of the importance of having conversations around mental health. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for covering on the report. And we are thanking for your kind words on Lord Costa. Are there any questions on the reports? Councillor Craig Martin.
Thank you, Chair. And can I tell the council if a few of the checks between assurances that the marketplace for the benefits were going to get it right this time? And do you think tax here deserves an apology considering the 6 million pound project to fix that 2 million pounds of asset that Chester Street District Council created in Pacific Park?
Sure, Chancellor. Well, yeah. First of all, can I obviously thank Councillor Martin for that question. We should note that this scheme is a flood alleviation scheme. What it's going to do is opening up the Convent or Central Chester Street, and follow the consultation that's previously taken place. So it's there to also alleviate some of the flooding incidents that have taken place. I would hope that, I'm sure mostly by so to have to say, welcome to that scheme to, which will alleviate the flooding, which has been suffered unfortunately, not just, have to say, in the town centre, but also by residents in a large number of houses with flooding. Of course, to the best of my knowledge, at least once, and I think twice in some cases, in the last few years, I think that one would be the main reason why this scheme is going ahead. And rightly so. I think we're obviously grateful to the Environment Agency for that, how they've been working with us, and indeed for the European funding that I think we've just about got in a good time. While that funding is still available, this scheme together is a major scheme. But as I say, flooding alleviation is the key part of it. It will also give us the opportunity to rejuvenate the marketplace. And also delighted that the market in Chester Street will remain in the centre of Chester Street, but will move to the rest. Of course, knows the red carpet area behind the National War Memorial that I know myself, Councillor Marshall, and I would be very pleased to support. And although not mentioning Craig Martin, Councillor Martin's question, I think, has been very positive in Chester Street. But just the last thing I want to say is that we've been very clear and careful to arrange meetings for all members in Chester Street to be able to keep up to pace and to help contribute to that scheme. And we had a few months ago, where we've been briefed and have been able to put questions in. We had another one yesterday, but unfortunately, Councillor Martin wasn't present at that meeting. So what I would say is it'd be very nice to see Councillor Martin to have those meetings in the future. Thank you.
Can I turn to Councillor Mark Wilkes, please?
Thank you, Chair. In respect to the county plan which the leader's earlier mentioned, numerous residents in my area have complained about what they see as predetermination of the county plan and the planning application, particularly in relation to the development of the Aitkenhead area. By way of example, the two enormous advertising boardings outside Aitkenhead and County Hall that none of us could miss publicly from space. And indeed, the 300-place car park at Aitkenhead, which has had no planning permission for over a year on council land, if private developers were doing that, I'm sure we'd be in there straight away. So could the leader please take notes of these concerns so that the council doesn't further lose confidence? So that the public doesn't further lose confidence in a council's consultation processes? Perhaps further damages reputation? Thank you, Chair.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I could say, obviously, in regard to everybody's comments I was in town, I believe the paper that went to Cabinet noted the number of responses that were made. Obviously, it's hard to say that the county's plan as a whole of the county Durham, and it's important that the survey looked at that in that regard. And, you know, consultation is that for, obviously, for reason, to allow that opportunity, and also, of course, to set another stage after that, which is an examination of public as well. So plans, or I think everyone here who has been previously involved with the district council knows that there's a lengthy process in terms of plan documents before they are adopted, that the last large is an opportunity for consultation if you can take part in that process and rightly so. So of course, Commissioner Wilkes's comments are important, as are everybody's on this key document of County Durham's future. Just the only thing that I would say is that clearly on Aitkenhead, there was a paper that came to Cabinet a number of months ago, I believe in September, which obviously was the reason why, obviously, some work and advertising in terms of what was in that paper has taken place since that point. So clearly, you know, a decision to proceed on the basis of outline that had the paper was made a long time ago. But in terms of this comment on the final general, yes, of course, it's very important that we consult all the way through this process, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you for that response. Can I ask the council to note the report?
Very good.
I'm generating five questions from area action partnerships. Can I ask the head of legal and democratic services to explain the procedure regarding the AAP questions, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. We have two questions this morning from the AAPs, which will be displayed in turn on the screen beforehand. The chair will invite the AAP representative to put the question and then ask the Cabinet portfolio holder to respond. There'll be no discussion on the question once it's been answered, and there'll be no supplementary questions allowed. A copy of the question and the response will be posted on the council website.
So the first question for today's meeting has been submitted by Chester Street Area Action Partnership. Can I invite Vice-Chair of the AAP, Councillor Jackie Smith, to ask their question, please?
Thank you, Chair. The Chester Street District AAP has adopted town centre issues as a priority for the AAP, and as such, the AAP welcome the recent Cabinet report, Town and Village Centred Way Forward. In the report, it outlined a number of potential themes that the council could focus on to reinvigorate and modern functioning the town centre. One particular theme that the AAP has discussed is the prospect of encouraging more residential units within the town centre. We have seen recent examples of it on an ad hoc basis in the town. The municipal office space is converted to residential flats. How could the current Chester Street Master Plan be used to encourage more residential development? Opportunity to encourage people to use local shops and services? Could the new Future High Street Fund announcement by the central government in October 2018 be used to support this type of investment? Thank you.
Can I ask the portfolio holder to respond, please?
Good morning, Chair, and good morning, Chester Street area for the question. As partly approached, the town will be decided in December Cabinet calls. We've been clear that the region migrant level town centre is mainly providing to die us means with uses including residential and leisure and retail. The same diversity of use was a feature of Chester Street Town Centre Master Plan, which was consigned to perform last year. In line with the Master Plan, we were already saying to start that we seek 2 million pounds for prevention scheme, which will also provide significant environmental benefits to the town. In addition, paid and retail premises are being reoccupied, and as you indicated, some commercial spheres in the town has recently received money content for conversion to residential use. The Master Plan identified clear opportunity where we believe the new development can really come forward, and more residential opportunities are an important part of our aspirations for the town. The recently announced Future High Streets Fund raises this approach, hoping to identify opportunities to consolidate radial use and reduce residential schemes and ensure access to community facilities and council improvements. We are working on our plans and opportunities across all town centre's before adopting, outlining its mission, and hope that may secure further resources for supporting or accelerating the community's agenda. Thank you, Chair, and good morning for the question.
Thank you, Councillor Shaw. The second question comes from East Durham Rural Corridor Area Action Partnership. Can I invite the AAP coordinator, Jenny Bellis, to ask their question, please?
The AAP is a better fund than various council and one for you. All the areas in that city plan them to perform delivery from the county to the town. Two thousand and ninety is right now. The year in the January. How can the AAP contribute to this plan? The county plan ensure that the AAP can contribute to a view?
And can I ask the Portfolio Holder to respond, please?
Thanks Chair, I'd like to just put my thanks to East Durham Rural Corridor for their questions this morning. The strategic cycle and more than delivery plan for County Durham has a strong emphasis on a partnership approach to delivery. We'll work closely with partner organisations in the production of the plan and will continue to ensure that partners include in the delivery of the action plan. The key aspiration of the plan is that more than cycling become part of everyday community life. The AAP is offering a hard road communities in helping deliver that success by promoting more than cycling for travel and at local level. We recognise that the East Durham Rural Corridor cycle route has been a significant investment for the AAP and on completion will provide a good opportunity for further engagement with local communities. We'd be happy to work with the AAP on the production of a route plan and interpret the material for the route to ensure that the infrastructure is used gradually and by increasing the number of people. It's a shame that the AAP and the council's enthusiasm and commitment has so far not been matched by a simple movement in terms of fully required to fully deliver this transformational plan. However, at a local level, there are many actions within the plan that the AAP needs to contribute towards and would welcome the opportunity to work together to deliver these. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Marshall. Your response concludes the questions from the AAPs. Can I thank the AAPs for submitting their questions and the representatives for attending the meeting? Thank you. I generated six questions from the public. There are no public questions for today's meeting. I generated seven petitions. There are no petitions for consideration today. I generated eight reports from the cabinets. Can I ask the leader of the council to present the report, please?
Chair, the report that the Cabinet said was this morning covers issues considered by the Cabinet at a meeting on the 12th of December, including reports on town village centres, as we all referred to, and regional adoption agency. I'm very pleased to be able to take all the reports.
Thank you for that. One question has been submitted from councillor Liz Madison. The question will be displayed upon the screen. Thank you Liz. Can I ask councillor Madison to ask a question, please?
Thank you Chair. I tend to the town that looks to be in December when town and village regeneration was discussed, and my question falls this nature. I'm pleased at the minute to reflect some of the points of my question. The extra amount allocated for town and village regeneration of 2.5 million each year for the next three years, whilst welcomed, is not sufficient to meet the needs of all towns and villages across County Durham where infrastructure has deteriorated due to lack of investment in previous years. In particular, we have recognised in Spennymore that opportunists developers have bought land and buildings, taking little account of any social responsibility and allowed their buildings or land to remain vacant for many years without adequate maintenance and consequential environmental problems for residents. In determining how this funding will be allocated, what criteria will be adopted to ensure that areas that have had no investment over the years, but a significant increase in housing developments, generating significant extra income to the council, will be fairly allocated money from this pot to ensure that masterplans are realised and that additional budget is also set aside to ensure enforcement measures are applied to bring vacant buildings and land within these areas up to a required standard. Thank you.
Councillor Madison, I thank you for that question. Can I invite the Portfolio Holder to respond, please?
Thank you Chair, and thank you councillor Madison for submitting your question in advance and for your continued efforts in this area. The town and village programme provides new funding in addition to existing town centre capital programme and the standalone projects which provide important investments in our towns and communities. While this additional money is important in itself, the report approved by Cabinet also highlighted our aspirations to include the coordination and delivery of our current services and investments in towns and villages, ensuring residents, businesses and businesses see maximum change and benefit for all of our work. In terms of our priorities, councillor Shaw and I have met with all members, including yourself, as we intend this to be an inclusive process where local members and the AP determine those things important in their areas. We appreciate that the funding we have is limited and therefore we've been looking to target those key issues that are identified locally and also those where council money can be a catalyst for bringing in other funding from partners and the private sector. I think by working together we can make a positive contribution across the whole County Durham and I look forward to working with all members of council on projects in their areas. Thank you Chair.
There being no further questions, can I ask the council to note the report? I generated nine, members' allowance scheme recommendations of the independent remuneration panel. Can I ask the corporate director of resources to present the report, please?
Good morning members. This report states that the outcome of the renewal of the allowance is to be taken into account by the independent regeneration panel for next year 2019-20. The report also states council agreements with scheme allowances for the 2019-20 term of year. The details of the panel's degreeations are set out in paragraph seven in the report and the representation data of the panel by individual elected members are set out in paragraph nine. The panel considered proposals for paying allowances to cabinet support members and whether car parking concessions should be provided to elected members. The panel gave the unanimous decision not to recommend payment to cabinet support members nor to recommend car parking concessions. The panel also considered the level of members' allowances and in view of the panel was to recommend a 1% increase to 2019-20 for the reasons that they set out in paragraph seven of the report. The consultation working group considered panel recommendations on the elected general group and will not apply it to support any changes to the allowances in 2019-20. Council is asked to agree scheme allowances for 2019-20 taking into account views of the independent regeneration panel that the Vic said out in the report. Thank you Chair.
Can I have a moment to move the recommendation, please?
As Chair of the Constitution Working Group, I thank members of the independent regeneration panel for their work and recommendations on the members' allowance. The Constitution Working Group, which includes representatives for groups across the council, considered those recommendations at its meeting held earlier this week. Although the panel recommended a 1% increase in members' basic allowance, which would have been the first increase for 10 years, the Constitution Working Group felt that the current scheme should be continued to 2019-20 with no changes made. I would like to move this recommendation this morning.
Thank you councillor Henning. Can I have a second to the recommendation, please?
Chair, I'd like to formally second the recommendation and emphasise what councillor Henning said in the franking the independent panel for considerable investment of price, which like councillor Henning said, will be first in 10 years. However, given the financial situation that calls the country and the council self-based, it would be inappropriate that we also recommend that at this time, moment in time, we don't have to.
Councillor Wilkes, thank you for your comments. Do any members have any questions on the report, please? There are none, thank you. Does the council agree the recommendation moved and seconded? I generated ten. I generated establishment of a head of corporate property and land. Can I ask the corporate director of regeneration and local services to present the report, please?
Thank you Chair, good morning members. This paper seeks to create a new head of service post in regeneration and local services, the head of corporate property and land. It comes to the council due to the salary of the post. The new post will consolidate all of the council's property, land, building services and services management functions under one head of service. It follows a review of the service and reflects best practice in managing land and property. In terms of benefits, I think it will allow us to link our estate management better to service delivery, the council's strategy on finance regeneration and particularly allow us to put great focus on those local land issues which have no impact on local members. It's not an additional post in terms of the service group. Sarah Olson, our head of economic development and housing, who's been with the council for 10 years, is leaving to take up a corporate director post at Regent Cleveland. That means we can realign responsibilities amongst the existing heads of service and bring in the new post to cover the corporate land and property role. We will of course get some communication tax members on those changes, including the science girls once they are finalised. Recommended to have paragraph five, Chair, to approve the status of the new post.
Thank you Ian. Can I have a mover to the report, please?
Good morning Chair. May I begin by also be my personal thanks to Sarah for being involved with the town as young member, but also more importantly, for her 10 years of professional and serving service at this authority. Sarah is head of some of the council's key projects, the remainder of the town centres initiatives across the county. Successful as a councillor, the success of its top performance, the new reach to and the work daily heads. May I indeed read, Michelle Will, at Regent Cleveland, where she will be new director of regeneration. The new head of corporate property of County Durham is often associated with some elements related to the council's land, buildings, facility management. The things will be in the lean strategy, property management, building services, facility management together to provide a joint service for residents and neighbours. I was hoping in discussion with his members that there were frustrations with our performance around assets and particularly land management. We've got an independent study which will remove the service and show us what current best properties and land and property looks like. This new post puts on the weight of best properties and rains which will be better placed in the line for assets by a work on thousands of town and village centres and ensure we get the best value out of them for all of our residents. I'd be proud of this.
Thank you councillor Shaw. Can I have a second to the report, please?
Chair, I'd like to formally second it. Before doing so, I'd just like to wish Sarah Well and her new role with Regent Cleveland and Bank at the work she's done on behalf of the council with the residents of County Durham and improve our communities. What we do with our land and buildings is vital for the delivery of our services and for the regeneration of our communities, Chair. And the work we're bringing forward on towns and villages will rely on us making best use of our assets and property across the county. We need to be creative in the way we enter the property negotiations with land and land developers. This pause will strengthen our ability to do this and deliver on our priorities for residents and the county and therefore can more than half a second the recommendations, Chair.
Thank you councillor Marshall. Would be many members have any questions on the reports? And I have councillor Mark Wilkes.
Thank you Chair. Clearly, better management of land is important and I support the creation of this house. However, it does concern me that there's no detail here as to who will be in charge of economic development at a time when it's critical we have leadership in that area with the council plan coming forward. More importantly for me though, there's a risk here that because the council has council housing at its watch here, housing is now not as important to us and will not have its own head of service. Now, I know that every councillor here will disagree with that. We all think that housing is extremely important, but there are so many elements to housing that the council is involved with. If it's simply distributed out, management of it amongst other offices, it may well be a retrograde step. If we look at the other offices that it would be distributed to, you've got the head of direct services, well, you're not going to put housing with them. You've got culture and sport, no. Technical services, no. Sports and contracting services, environmental health. It worries me. You've got planning and assets there, but we all know that planning and assets is under a huge amount of strain with massive numbers of planning applications, a huge amount of issues with the county plan as well. It just concerns me where, and I say this not just to the officer, but to the portfolio holder, where are we going to put this emphasis on housing going forward? If there's no head of service, it worries me that it's going to be distributed out and maybe we're not going to have as much concentration on what is really needed in relation to housing in this county.
Can I see that as a question to a portfolio holder? Or indeed him?
Having to answer that, Chair. I mean, well, obviously, I think as I said in the introduction, we're still working on the detail of the actual allocation of the, how we set the service out for the area. What we think gives us the opportunity of doing is in creating the separate asset post, which of course takes some responsibilities away from direct services, technical services and planning and assets, gives us a chance to put the main development functions of the council and community regeneration planning together with housing and put that under that head of service. So I think that gives us a really comprehensive approach to that whole place shaping service area. And as members have said, that allows us then to link that in, I think, with the capacity of the new assets, corporate property and land post. Gives us quite a comprehensive approach to how we deal with land and property, how we deal with our housing, but also how we sort of shape our strategies and our plans. So they put it all in one place where it's quite strong, dear opposition, Chair.
Thank you Ian. And I have councillor George Rollins.
Thank you Chair. Some seven years ago, we had a head of assets and that post was raised for early retirement of voluntary redundancy. But this is the same, George. Are we in the right of doing this? Because by changing the name, what does it mean for the thing reading this? It doesn't...
Ian to respond?
Thank you Chair. Again, having to pick up the detail with councillor Marshall's word outside of here, this is a different post to the previous head of assets post. This post takes in all of land, it takes in all of services management, as well as the core land and land and strategy management for the council. So this post as a head of service will have about 500 staff, it'll be one of the biggest posts, head service posts that the council has. And I think by pulling all those things together, we do get those, a sort of comprehensive view of our asset base, how we spend our money on our own buildings, how we do business with our partners going forwards. It's quite a different one, I think, to the biggest post, Chair.
Thank you Ian. Councillor Gray Martin?
Just can I be confirmed that will housing be covered by the head of planning, please?
Yes, it will, please.
Thank you.
No further councillors are registered to speak. And I ask if the portfolio holder wishes to respond before we move to a vote.
Thank you Chair. It's a bit of a point I know it's by default. I may even recede because you have a struggle to identify this. It's a matter of the main consultation and I'd like to take the opportunity to ask the members on the other side of the chair on any suggestions we've got on how this structure could be improved and how we can improve the future of our housing more so.
We will vote to approve on this opportunity.
Thank you Chair. I'm glad that the usual process will apply. Please wait for the beat before you press your voting button. For those in favour of the recommendation to approve the establishment of the new post, please press one. Vote again, press two. For those wishing to abstain, press three. If you vote accidentally the wrong way, just press the correct button and it should rectify. Thank you.
In favour, 104. Against, nil. Abstain, two. There's carry, there's carry. It takes us on to motions on notice. There were no motions on notice submitted for today's meeting. I'm generating 12. Questions from members. No questions from members were submitted for today's meeting and there being no other business, that concludes today's meeting. Thank you very much, we go to this.